Hello Imperial Valley and those in the west coast, east coast that are looking at me right now. I have George, I can't really say your last name, but you could say it. I have your Facebook page up, so those are looking at, look at his Facebook page. And also those are looking at, um, right now, all the negative comments will be deleted. You could put your comments on Facebook or YouTube right now. Those are my YouTube followers. Not that I thought about that, but I'll do that later on. Always forget one of the things I forgot to do. My YouTube followers, so if you are looking on YouTube, please don't forget to put your comments on YouTube or Facebook. And, um, just, just, uh, I have George, he's running for office. He has a big history, like we all do have some kind of history, running for office. We do have a background. And I want to thank all those that are, that are be sharing this. Don't forget to share this as well. Let me just, just forgot one thing. And, and, and he's, he's on with me right now, but like I said, he has a story. We all have a story. And, um, here it goes. And let me talk, you could talk while I do that PowerPoint. If you're willing to go for it, George, go for it.
Daniel, what's up? How are you, brother? Thank you for having me on. I appreciate it. Want to say hi to all the people from Calipat, Imperial Valley. And, um, my name is George Prieto. I'm running for Calipat City Council. And there is four people running and there's two seats. So I'm hoping to get your vote. A little, a little bit about me, um, I've been into Calipat for 30 years. I'm a 1995 graduate of Calipat High School. I'm a Hornet. I have four kids, Alicia, Ariana, Alejandro and George. They all go to school here. And that's one of my reasons for running for the city council. I want to see a change. I want to see things different here in the state. I currently, uh, work for I S S and I've been doing that for the last four years. And for 15 years I did, uh, merchandising in about seven or eight states around the United States. And we were gracefully, uh, we got the chance to do the Dollar General here. So basically we come in and they give us a, uh, store that's empty and we provide all the shelves. And, um, they give us 10 days to do all the merchandising. And there you go. We put all the merchandising up and I work with my family. And from there, I started to get into, uh, tacos, making tacos. I am the taco guy. So yeah, so we have Taco Loco and hopefully, uh, those are my kids. Hopefully that'll take off soon. And yeah, I'm ready for city council. I want to see a change in our city and I think that, uh, the four candidates, including myself, have potential. So I wish everybody the best. So, um, going to, uh, I want to hit on some of the topics of, uh, or how I at least became involved and what's going on in the politics in Calipat. For me, it was actually, uh, accidental the way I came in. And, uh, I'm more of the music entertainment. I like to sing. A lot of people know me as singing with bands and mariachi and stuff like that. So, uh, there was an ad in the paper. The city of Calipat was, uh, wanted to volunteers to, uh, together and possibly get ideas for the centennial. So it started as that, as the ad. So we met up at city hall and it was about five of us, six of us. And, um, ideas were thrown out as what would happen, you know? They added a 5K run. From the 5K run, it went to, uh, what about having a party? What about, you know, centennial, 100 years? So it went like that. And as the weeks went by, it was about a seven, eight month, uh, progress to when we did have the festivities. The group kept getting bigger and bigger. So it went from five to 10 to 15. I think it was about 20 people that joined and I was in charge of the sound and entertainment. So with that, uh, I got to meet a lot of people and it was really, really fun. It was a two day event. And I got to work with, um, a hundred performers that, that, uh, that day. So by the time that that was over, we had a meeting and our last meeting was, uh, where do we go from here? You know, everybody was saying goodbye and everybody was, uh, everybody thought that that was the last of, you know, the centennial. So we did finish the centennial, however, uh, Ram, our city manager was asking us, anybody was interested to join the Lions Club, if anybody was interested in, uh, joining Chambers. So half of the group, mm, decided yes. So mostly everybody said yes. So everybody became Lions. And some of us became, um, Chambers. And I was voted, uh, Chamber President, not knowing that everything else that would come with it, right? So that has been a challenge and that was fun. So from, um, during the chamber, it came a lot of things with it. And we got a lot of press, a lot of publicity. It was really, really fun until the COVID hit. But with the chamber, we were able to do, uh, the State of the City address. We had, uh, our first black and white ball, which raised the money for kids at school. Then we also did the grand opening, the Circle K. We also had our Christmas in the dark. So we're rolling, we're moving, we're moving it. And then the COVID hit. So everything's on hold right now. Of course, Chamber and Lions have gone dark. And, uh, that's where I stand. So looking at the outside, looking in and looking at, uh, the city council and the city manager and the mayor and having, uh, dealt with, you know, the fire, the police, the library, everybody in town is, is so neighborly and everybody gets along. So being with that, I told myself, you know what? I gotta get more involved. I gotta get more involved in what's happening. And being those open seats open, I said, you know what? I'm going to take advantage and I'm going to put my bid in. And that's where I'm at right now.
Looking at your pictures, um, how's the tacos business doing up in your part, part of town?
Well, I had to stop because of the COVID stuff because I do it from home. So I was doing festivals and parties. So being that, uh, the festivals had, they all stopped. We're actually, we were going to have a farmer's market, uh, with the Calipat, uh, chamber. But that fell through. It was going to be during the, I guess it was the middle of March. So they stopped us, the health department stopped us and we weren't able to go through with that. But, um, yeah, I want to get back to doing that, the tacos, because people love the tacos. And we actually won People's Choice for two years at the Taco Show down in Raleigh, which that was fun too. And, uh, yeah, people liked our, our style, like our tacos. And, uh, I have my family helping me, my kids. And I got my nephew and some friends and it's good, you know? Something different, something that, uh, I didn't think I would be able to do. But my kids are, are the biggest influence. They're the ones that are saying, send me, go dad, go dad, do what you gotta do. So I mean, it helps me too. So they like my cooking and a lot of people like my cooking. So hopefully I'm trying to open a restaurant. So we'll see what, what happens in the future.
What do you want to tell your people in Calipat with, what, you know, I, I saw that you had, you had, you have like a, a good resume. I read it before it started. Um, uh, um, you, you have a lot of story within, within the community out there, you know, it's, it's, um,
One of the things that I sent you, that, yeah, is my list of, of things I'd like to. And, uh, I think it's number eight is the pictures I sent you. Uh, so back in 2012, I believe there's a drain in Calipat or there's not, I'm sorry. The west side has one, but the east side don't. So when the east side floods, that water just stays there. So that's the east side part. Um, the other ones is the east side. So I believe that it, uh, it was a water main break and a lot of families on the east side were affected by that. They tend to forget the east side. So that stayed there for, for a week or so to the water. I forgot how they removed it, but we need a drain on the east side. So that's one of the things too, that I'm interested, uh, that, that was a shock in itself, seeing that. But I heard many years before that the drain has broken and it's been happened several times. I think that the city should address that and put some funding into it. Some grants, something that can go in so that won't happen again. Because a lot of people did, uh, lose their homes when that happened, um, and it can happen again. And I don't think we're ready for something like that. So I think we should be looking into, you know, getting a drain out there. Uh, I know it's going to be costly, but at the same time too, it'll be beneficial to the east side. And it needs some development down there, some housing development, because there's a lot of empty lots. But I think that's one of the reasons why people don't want to help out the east side or move to the east side. Cause they know that's an issue, which is the water. There's no drain system over there. So anytime some of those houses on floor level, well, some of the houses are up, the water won't get into them. But most of those, those houses are, were underwater for a week or so. But anyways, more things that I want to address, well, the improvements of the roads and streets of Calipat and appropriate lighting on Main. And then we also got an airport. Have you ever seen our airport, Daniel?
No, every time I go there, I never seen it. Honestly, I never seen that there was an airport there.
Yeah, there's an airport here. It's, uh, well, I don't know if it's in use anymore, but I remember back, I don't know, 10, 12 years. I used to see activity there. I used to see parachuting. I used to see a lot of activity. But I would like to see that get updated and use as a revenue source for our city. Uh, we can use it for the military. I believe farming uses it right now, but, um, different things, you know, maybe we can have flights to Palm Springs, flights to, to San Diego.
That'd be, that'd be nice.
Right? In Calipat. And also, um, new businesses. I want to see new businesses come to town, uh, change the landscape to attract the business. Our, our, uh, main street is not in no shape, way or form for anybody to come in and say, hey, you know what? I want to start a business here because there's no attraction. There's nothing there. There's nothing to say. You know what? And I don't think anybody wants to take the chance to open a business. And another thing, uh, uh, I think we need to work on housing development. You know, there's a few apartments over here and, um, there's houses, but we have a lot of land. Um, I don't know if the city's ready for that, but I would like to see some housing development. And then we have some, uh, homeless people here too. You know, that, that's unattractive. You go down to Circle K and you see the homeless, just, they're just laying out like, and everybody's going about their business, then everybody acts like they don't see them. And it's just like, I think that if you have two homelessness, uh, people, um, they attract more homeless, you know, then it's going to be six, then it's going to be eight, then it's going to be 10. If we don't address the issue now, we'll be full of it. So I, I believe that some of the people come from Slab City down this way. I know they shop at the Dollar General and the Market Square and there's Zendaya Hardware. But at the same time too, some of them get comfortable when they see that there's other homeless sleeping on Main Street. Uh, they have all their bags and stuff and it's, it's not a good sight to see. It's kind of embarrassing. But I mean, um, if we can help the homeless, educate them, maybe put them on a case management and try to help and see what's going on with them, you know? I mean, they've probably had a rough life. They have it rough right now and no one seems to try to help them. So hopefully we can address that issue. Another thing that I,
I saw you put house in case management, which is awesome, because a lot of politicians that are running for office, I asked them that question, because I know you guys are not too far from the Slabs, Nylde. They all come that down this way, coming towards Raleigh, from Raleigh, they come to El Central and they go back again on the, on the transit bus, which I, I was told when I was in Westmoreland one time. They go, no, they go straight to, to up to the north. And I'm like, whoa. And I really found out about two years ago, I was up in Westmoreland. I like to check the transit. That's just my style. When I, when I do journalism and, and I was told it, they all go straight from your town to straight, and then there's a little shuttle that's from Calipat to, to the Slabs. It's every Wednesdays. And yeah, I'm, I'm glad you put that awareness, because it is, I'm an advocate for the homeless here. Well, it was, Imperial Valley is called California Homeless Union. And you know, I mean, that's what we do and we're, we're for, you guys are wanting help. Cause our motto is, yeah, they're drunk. Well, we're going to change them for not being drank no more. Our motto in the homeless, um, California Homeless Union, a lot of people know that. They think we're just, we're for the ones that are drunks and, um, drug addicts. No, those drug addicts are, are going to be transformed like regular human beings. And that's why I'm glad you put that out there. Go to your next one.
Something, uh, the El Central has the tiny houses. Did they just have, I seen in the paper?
Yeah, it's gonna be pretty soon. I think this summer or the winter, they're going to do groundbreaking. It's going to be right where the, off of I-8, actually on 8th Avenue hitting towards, um, Target. It's going to be, uh, blocked right there. But it's only 35 houses, a tiny house, only 35. There's more than 35 that are homeless. And, and when I saw point and count, they go and trans, they're transy, as they go to Calixico, but I'm now seeing, noticing they're all going to Calixico now. Cause the border is just right there. So as I see, they come to El Central, but in El Central, they all hide from the cops. Or they just have their place where they hide. I learned that already. And yeah, they're going to do a tiny house, but it's for, only for the college students. I don't know. We saw the news. It's for the college students only. So it doesn't really make sense. What about the general public? No, that's my question for the city of El Central. What, what about the general public that are altered?
The city here in Calipat is addressing the issue because being on the chamber, we got some correspondence coming through. Uh, that's, uh, something about some trailers. I don't know if they got a grant or, but you know what they are. The issue is, is being discussed right now. So that's a good thing. Uh, another thing that, um, that I do when I do drive around town is I see the alleyways. The alleyways are really, really dirty. And I mean, I don't put the blame on the city. I put the blame on ourselves as a community. We need to be out there with shovels. We need to help. You know, there's only so much the city can do and there's only so much money that they have. Um, that was one thing that we, we tried to start was a, a beautification kind of deal. And, uh, with that, I mean, I would think that we would be grants for, just for instance, gloves, shovels, rakes, wheelbarrows, trash cans. And I believe that there is a lot of interest in volunteer. The youth like to do it. You know, I don't know if you see some pictures that I put up. Uh, I invite the youth out. They, I mean, since COVID, they can't do anything. They're out with their, their, you know, anytime we have a cleanup, the youth always seem to want to help and do something. Cause they see the way that some of these, uh, lands are. And I don't know if there can be like an ordinance change or something to bring awareness or talk to the landowner about keeping those lands clean, free of debris. Because I know, I know that those are fire hazards. And I mean, the last thing we need is a fire, like Nylde had, you know? So when you do go, the more you see it is when you cross the tracks on the east side. That's where you see it at. And, um, it is an issue and it's, it's ugly. It's like, it's our backyard and nobody wants to see the backyard, you know? So that's one thing. And another thing I, I think, me being in the healthcare, um, I would like to see some healthcare out here, maybe a medical office and a pharmacy. We did have a pharmacy about 20 years ago. And you know, people need to leave our small little town. They need to go to either Nylde as a clinic and also Raleigh as a, a clinic and of course the hospital. But that would be another thing too, you know, with, with the healthcare. A small little medical office with a doctor and pharmacy where they can get their, you know, the medication or whatnot. And then another thing that I see that is a big thing is the senior and the handicap. I know a few seniors that, um, they don't have access to, you know, the ramps and the sidewalks are messed up. And I mean, they're the ones that, that need help also, seniors and, and the handicap. So I was thinking maybe like a 14 unit housing for the handicap and the, and the seniors. Because, um, we don't have much, but the few that we do have, I mean, they struggle. I've seen them struggle getting in their cars. I've seen them struggling when they're walking. I see them struggle. There's no, um, curb sidewalks for them. That's another big issue that, that we need is, is the sidewalks, you know, sidewalks also in our city. And then, um, I'm really interested in the city ordinances. I know there's city ordinances, but I'm not too much into their, uh, into the city hall yet. I just go to a few meetings. But I don't see the ordinance getting enforced with, uh, I want to say like cars, abandoned cars and houses. That's another one, you know? You drive around and you see there's a place that has like 10 cars that are not used. That's a fire hazard. I don't know who, who that would be addressed to. Um, and another big issue that I see too is land. There's a lot of land out here. And I know city owns some of it. So with that being said, I know that we are, our budget, I, I believe it's 500,000 we're in debt. So with the land that, that the city has, they can either sell, they use or rent the land. And some of the land has been vacant for years. I would like our city to grow, you know? I would like it to change. I would like to see something different. I've been here 30 years and there hasn't been a big change. There needs to be a big change. So that's where I stand on my issues.
And I'm glad you said that, because like I said, the, the opposite side are talking about it. And you, you came out full force, which is awesome, because this is, this is what the public wants to hear. And, and what's going on, what are the plans and what are the visions for the city? Because people don't understand that once you run for office, these, these are not your promises. These are just things you need to work on. And, and I'm going to throw it out there. I don't know if you know about this, but every city has a block grant. It's called CGB funding. Look at that. Google it. Uh, CGB funding. Every city has one for, it's called a rainy day fund or money for projects. Every city has that grant. It's called CGB funding. Also they, the city also gets proposition funding money as well for, um, projects or this, from the state. There's also grants for that. And those are supposed to be on your treasure. But I found out your, your one grant writer for the whole city is one person in that town. And I, and I told them, I don't want to say her name, but she, we, you know, uh, I'll be working. Yeah, you know what it is. I don't want to say her name. I want to put her expose. This is about you today, not her. And, uh, but yeah, she's, she said, hey, there's only one person writing a grant. I was like, well, I think as a grant writer, I'm going to go teach you guys, which is set for, uh, November 14th. The, the time and location is still, that's why I'm asking for sponsorship as we speak, because you're in that area. So I'll be looking for sponsorships, um, to get me over there is one. Two, um, to make it happen, um, to get people that are interested in, from individuals, artists and people like yourself as a business owner.
That's my, uh, that's my slogan, make it happen. I will help you. No, um, that, that's another thing too. I would like to see, uh, the city have more staff in there, you know, I mean, like I'm saying, it, there's a lot of city issues. There's not a lot of finger to point. It's more of a, what can you do about it, uh, as an individual? That's why I'm, I'm running for city council. If I can give my voice and I can be that voice for the community, then that'll be great for me and also for the community. Because I do have a lot of sponsors and donors and faculty. I do have a lot of people that are pushing me. A lot of people that, um, know what my, what I do want for the city and they see that, uh, hopefully it could be a progress, you know, and not sit where we've been sitting for the last 20 years. And I know that's harsh to say, because it doesn't look like a lot of things have been done. But at the same time too, I'm not at the, uh, city hall full time. I don't know how they run. I'm just seeing from what I'm seeing in the last two years, um, I've been going just on and off. But, um, I mean, I don't, I don't want to, uh, put them down. It's not a put down at all. Because I know that the city council as well as the city manager, they run our city and our city looks good, but it could look better. So with that said, um, I believe that I can be a change if I will vote it in. Vote George Prieto.
That's what I was going to say. Vote for you. I mean, I, I, I saw you, I was going back to your pictures the day you were doing mariachi at there in, in Raleigh. I'll never forget it that day. I went with, me and Tony went that day. Tony picked me up and Tony goes, vamos, almost like. And at the time I was in, I was just that mute fresh beef journalist out there, you know? And Tony's like, I'm coming from my hometown, I'm driving by your house and vamos. Don't ask me what, just get ready to take pictures. I'll never forget it. And you, it was, it was all about you guys at the mariachi in Calixico.
Yeah, um, the mariachi stuff and the music stuff, you know, that's, that's my passion. That's something that I like to do. And I get my, my kids are getting into it. They're learning instruments. And they follow me, any crazy idea I have, they're right there saying, go dad, go, which is great. But, uh, yeah, the music, I think brings people together. The music is what makes it alive. I do a little bit of DJ and all that good stuff. But no, the live music is where it's at. And I think people love the mariachi and they love live music. So you can't go wrong. But, um, yeah, so another thing that I'm going to say, and I'm going to say this, um, I know that we get a stipend if I were to, if I was chosen for, uh, city hall, you get a stipend. I, I believe it's about a hundred dollars a meeting. I don't know how much it is at other cities or whatever. So it's two meetings a month. So roughly comes out to about 2,400, 2,500 a year, something like that. On my end, I make a promise. This is a promise. If I were to get voted in, I'd like to, uh, donate my earnings to a nonprofit. So I'll be working for free. I'm a volunteer. I've always been a volunteer in things that I've done. And I don't see why I shouldn't be volunteering anymore. So to me, honestly, that would be a big change also. I wouldn't be taking away anything from the city. I would be adding to the city. So I would, uh, research, uh, what's a good nonprofit, maybe the beautification of Calipat. And like I said, the money that the stipend that, uh, if I was chosen to, they give it to me, I would give it back. I would give it back. So I've worked for free. And I believe it's a four year term, right?
Yeah, years of four year terms, four year term.
So four years, I'll be volunteering my time, because that's how much I believe in what I'm doing. And I don't say that to gain a vote. I don't say that to be, oh yeah, you know? I say that with all my heart, because I do love our city, my, my city, you know, our city's great. The people are great and my kids are growing up here. My, my daughter's a senior, my other daughter is a sophomore. Uh, my son is in fifth grade and my, uh, my baby son, he is in, uh, first grade. So we have an interest here, you know, my kids, they love the parks. That's another thing. The parks is a big, big thing. And we'd like to see, I'd like to see the parks, you know, green. I'd like to see green grass. I'd like to see the trees, you know? Uh, that's another issue, a big issue, the water. They're stealing our water. They're taking our water, something that is ours.
Now you said that, why they, why are they charging guys so much even though it's private entity? I don't get it. Why didn't IID get involved a long time ago before a private entity? Who signed that contract? That's what my mind is on that.
Let me tell you something, um, uh, the county, the board of supervisors, uh, they're the ones that control Nylde, right? So I don't know how the county has the Golden State water. And we have Golden State water, like who's looking out for our best interest? That's another issue, you know? That's another issue that, uh, I believe city council can handle. And the city council would be the one to talk to the county. But I mean, I don't know what's going on to tell you the truth, and I don't think it's fair deal. But that's something that's gotta look, gotta be looked into in the future and it's gotta be resolved. Whether it's a buyback slowly, whether it's, um, rates going down. I don't know what to tell you, because I'm not too familiar with that subject. But I do know that there's a concern, because right now I live in an apartment. So I pay my bill, my water included. But when I do talk to the people, some people are telling me their bills are 250, 300 dollars. Sometimes it's 400. They can't water their plants outside. It looks, uh, dry. Everything is dry because the water is so much, you know? And I mean, shower wise, restroom wise, quick showers, because their water is too much. They only use it for their essentials, like their cooking, their showers, their restroom, and that's it. Most of the land out here is dry and our parks are dry. We talked to the county about that already. But once again, I'm going as a, not even representing my county, just as, uh, individual, talking to the county, saying, hey, what's wrong with our waters? And they've told us different stories back and forth, how, you know, promises and promises. But who knows? Who knows? I guess you gotta be put in this position and I guess you gotta be the squeaky wheel to, you know, get oil. That's what I'm trying to be. And I know it takes a lot of, uh, passion. And that's what I'm here for, you know? That's what, um, I would provide. That's what I will do if I was elected. Um I would provide, that's what I will do if I was elected. So once again, vote George Prieto.
I mean, um if I did a survey in your town, I'm still working on a survey. I don't know if I sent you the survey, but I'm working on a survey. Of all city councils, I didn't even put ID on there. I didn't put proposition. I just put city councils through the through the county. And um by end of the by end of the before election, I'll I'll give you guys a a a quick number. Who who who's who's up to the survey for to be office? Yeah, so. Now you said that, I just remember I I have a survey going out there. It's circling through the valley, so I I I've just been getting hits off and on on emails, so. Uh I've been getting hits by people and I told them to share it to anybody that's running for city council in Pure Valley, you know.
What happens uh in my case is that uh I have passion, tengo corazón. So what it is with me, my my mouth gets in trouble, dude. Like seriously, and not that I I want to, I I see the the unjust and I I it's. The the it's unfair, things that happen. Sometimes I have to say, you know what, I'm just gonna shut my voice. Be quiet because people take a lot of things the wrong way and the changes that are gonna uh that will happen are gonna take. A long time. I know, I know because I've seen a lot of things that happened in town that. Take, for instance, the streets, that's that's a good thing that the city council is doing along with the city manager. We've got streets that have been. I mean, hmm they're bad in bad shape. But if you will come to the city now, you see some of the streets have got fixed and some of the streets are getting fixed now. So. And to me, it's, you know, they're moving, but they're moving slowly, but that's with everything. That's with everything. So with that being said, yeah. I would like your vote, Calipat. Vote for me. Vote for a change.
It's time for a change in Calipat cuz I reached out to half of the ones that are running for office. I call the new bees, which is you. And um yeah, I mean, oh, I just got a thumbs up from a person already, you know, they're liking this interview. Thank you. Mister Ramirez. Thank you, Ramirez, for the thumbs up. Yeah, so I'm see I'm telling you, my phone rings like crazy. No, but like I'm saying, I'm glad because. When I saw it, it was like four ladies and one guy. I'm like, hey, what's so what this? Where the guys not popping up for office? You know, that's when I called you like, hey, you know, you're a guy, well, three, four ladies running for office, come on.
You know what? They're all great. Uh they're all my friends. I adore them. I I I love what they're doing. Um Maria has the resource center and she's been a great help with a lot of things that she has done. Jackie has the best step forward and. That's also great too with what she does. And Sylvia does a lot of stuff for the city also. She's on Alliance. She's on the chambers. She's part of beautification. So you do got a lot of qualified people out here and it it's it's good to see that uh. They're also a big changer. They're they're part of what's going on. They're part of what the movement, part of what's happening. So. I mean, even if I were not to be chosen for uh city council or voted for, I'll still be involved some way or some form. I'll still be with the shovel out there. I'll still be cleaning. It doesn't take much, you know, it just takes the willing to to do it and like I'm telling you, I got heart, I got passion. And this is what I do. So I'm learning little by little to hold my comments and what I put online and 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 what I I choose to share because. There's a lot of things that people take uh they they take wrong, you know, they they look at your profile and they think that they know you. They think like when I wear my mariachi suit, they they know they're, he's full blown mariachi. That's not, that's a part of me. Or when they see me cleaning the city, that's a part of me. When they see me making the tacos, that's another part of me. When they see me with the youth, that's another part of me. So now this the new change coming through, which would be city council, that'd be another part of me. And like I'm telling you. My stipend will go back to nonprofit to help. I'm a volunteer, you know. I I wanna consider myself a humanitarian too cuz I I do help people because a lot of people help me. And I know what it is to be homeless. I was homeless. I know what it is to be on the streets. I was on the streets. I know what it is to to be hungry. So all those things I can relate to other people that I see. I mean, I talk to so many people. And the one thing that um attracts me the most about the the people of Calipat is most of them are humble. They're humble, they're hardworking. Um and I know I see there's a lot of loans and grants and stuff out there. Some of these people don't know how to approach the loans and grants, you know. They're so hardworking and humble that. I I don't wanna say they're embarrassed, but they don't wanna ask for a handout. So that's when the city council comes involved to. Say, hey, you know what? Let us be the advocate. Let us be the ones to help you. Let us be the ones to, if you're embarrassed, let us do the paperwork, you know, let us help you with. But I mean, there's a lot of people here that are very hardworking and they're humble people and they're great people. So. I'm for the people, by the people, with the people, so I would be doing this for the people, like I'm telling you. And I would volunteer my time just like I do all the time. And hopefully we can make a change, Daniel. That's what it's all about.
Yeah, it's about changing. And when she said about the homeless, I I was there two thousand nine. Well, I mean. I was there and that's why it comes to homeless is dear down to me cuz I I know, like you say, you were homeless. You. You know what it is to be homeless. They don't they don't they weren't those that were never in that side of the that line don't know what it is or or those.
A lot of people, a lot of people don't know that I was homeless and I don't say that, but I mean, that was. So I'll tell you this, I mean, and it it's something that I didn't wanna share, but I'll share anyway. I'm an open book. Um I wanna say that it. Was in early nineteen eighty-four. Uh we're originally from up north, Stockton, California. Uh my mom came down this way. We got away from gang violence. My brothers were in gangs and stuff like that. And we ended up in at the border, right, right that at that park at the border and we were homeless. We were homeless. We we would have one meal a day, be at the Salvation Army. Uh they'd be uh. Uh sandwiches of cheese and mustard and to this day I don't like mustard. I guess it was because of that, but you know what? It's grateful experience to live. I don't I don't regret any of it because. When you see people, you don't know what they're going through. People automatically assume homeless, they're drunk. Oh, they are, they they assume, oh, you know what? They're on drugs. You know, and for kids to be homeless at, I mean, I was, what I wanna say, seven, eight years old, living in a bush for like two weeks. And nobody would help us and that's crazy, you know. I mean, I'm not, I wasn't the only one. I my brothers and sisters. And it's ironically, I things I I say happen accidentally, like it's happened all my life. So from there, I think we got housing in El Central and I couldn't wait to be a Spartan because that's where we were at, fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade. My mom had got housing in Calipat. That's how we ended up in Calipat, on the east side. I'm from the east side. So she got housing and we ended up here. I remember coming to this town saying, oh, no, I wanna leave back to El Central. And so we had the Burger King, we had the Jack and Fox, we had things to do, we had the art, we had. Wilson had uh uh that was, there you go. I I can't, I can't taste Spartan. I'm a hornet, man. I I didn't go over there, but I wanted to so bad cuz I seen an opportunity. It would, they had, I I believe it was the jazz band.
Jimmy Cannon Jazz Band, Jimmy Cannon.
It was awesome, man. So you know what? Fortunately, and it was a blessing that we ended up in Calipat through the housing authority. We ended up on the east side. And then from there, you know, it's just the the small town, small field where we are. I mean, I. Still, everybody still knows everybody. You go by and say hello to everybody. Everybody still, like I'm telling you, they're humble. They'll offer you a glass of water, a taquito, whatever. And that's how we are, you know, neighborly. That's true when they say Calipat is neighborly. And um what more for my kids to grow up in a small town like this, like I did. And there is a sense of security because it is safe, you know. And um I love it. I love our little town. There's endless.
Now you said that, that that's a topic nobody understands because housing is in the valley, yes. But it's in the northern. It's in Brawley through Calipat in that area. I don't know if you noticed that. That's the big thing when it comes to housing. There's no housing in El Central. There's no housing in Callexico where people wanna live at because all the housing is in Brawley through the Calipat. I I I help. Yeah, the, oh, yeah, uh I thank God I do to my network. Uh I could just contact a few person through phone and hey, guess what? I need housing for homeless. And it'll be like, but they could be on a waiting list for two weeks, but uh guess what? They're could be in Brawley or Calipat. Are they willing to take that step? And soon I tell the client, they're like, no, I I I'll either stay in El Central or Callexico. Or Mexicali. Now it's like, they'll just jump the border. I mean, where Mexicali? It's like, okay, you know Mexicali. You know, and it's it happens all the time when I help people out there, even the single mothers out there, single fathers out there. Cuz it 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 everyone don't wanna go to the northern. I know nobody, you know.
I'll tell you, I never wanted to come here and when we did come here, I mean, I told my mom, what 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 did you do to us? What's going on? But. After a few li- years living here, my mom's moving. I said, no, we're not. No, we're not. You know, we got to know the people, you know, uh. Our teachers were great, the school was great, the city, everything about it, the small town feel, I really fell in love with it and. I mean, I believe I'm gonna die here. So with that being said, vote George Prieto, Calipat City Council.
And that town, it had the Marines. I don't know if you guys saw it, one of the. Marines were in your town, dude? I was there with a veteran with me. Uh he went, we went together. And I was media, so I got I got to go way on the top, take pictures. I still look at the videos on my YouTube channel. And I still go back cuz I interview you guys and I go back to the day I was with in Calipat. And I never seen so much kids enthusiasts seeing these Marines perform. These kids were like so hyped up over music. It was awesome show. I I'm sorry to say it was, it was an awesome show this year.
Before COVID, yeah, this COVID thing has really taken over and it really stopped a lot of people, but um yeah, here we are and. It's too bad we don't, we're not able to have a a live debate, you know, with where we can get going forces. Because like I'm telling you, we all know each other, we're all good friends and you know, we're neighborly. And if the way if it came down to it, I believe that everybody would would agree to it and. Everybody that's running to find people, the great people, they have their family here, they have their kids here and um. I I think that they they wanna see some change also and change is coming and we're trying to make it happen. We're trying to make it happen.
Like you said, change is coming, change is gonna come. Don't forget to like his page. Call him, look for him. What business are you doing tacos right now? Are you or you're?
I can't, but um.
You're campaigning, you're busy campaigning.
I'm campaigning, I'm campaigning, but um I'll do the IHSS. But uh I wanna get back into, I wanna get back into the uh the tacos because that's something that um I love too and. With tacos comes music, so I mean, that's two things right there. But um. Yeah, it's slow, you know, it's slow to, I mean, I I know the county has lifted some restrictions, but. I don't want to be the one to say, oh, I got sick and I got somebody sick off of my taco, you know, with the COVID. So I'm trying to keep it safe. I don't wanna be able to walk there and and I mean, cuz you know, you take a chance if you're out there and. You know, it's still active and what happens if you get somebody sick and it's your name, it's your business, if that doesn't look too good. So I mean, I don't know what we're doing with this COVID thing, but uh I hope it ends because my kids are getting restless and crazy here at the house. I try to take them out. I did take them swimming a couple of times and uh just for walks here and there, but other than that. They're pretty much stuck at the house, just like everybody else. But anyways. Yeah, so those are my topics. Those are my issues that I think that we I would try to tackle and I know that, like I'm saying, it's not a. Something that would happen overnight and um maybe that people have other issues, you know. Uh everybody in town has something on their mind, other than what I I have on my mind and I'm sure the candidates have something else on their mind too. It's um it's something, I think it's something big and it's gonna be a change, like I'm saying, and I would like to be part of that change. I would like to be voted in on city council. So once again, vote George Prieto, Calipat City Council.
Yeah, um what what's the last um thought is in your mind about your community? What what? For the community to vote for you, what what is it? You wanna tell the last word out there that's listening in Calipat right now? Those in northern, what you wanna tell them?
I would uh what what gets me mostly is when you walk down Main Street. I would like to see a beautiful lane. And I know it'll take a few years for that, but I would like to uh tell the people, uh especially small business owners. Um take that leap of faith if you have a small business and there's any way, I mean, like. I I would like to help anybody in any way that I can with information and knowledge that I know, I with loans and grants and. And even possibly stuff that the city has. So I'll leave with uh small business. That's something that. Really is uh the key for us to grow, you know, not so much corporate. We do have a few corporate stores, which we're thankful for. We have the Circle Can, Dollar General. But apart from that, uh we have Zendaya's Hardware and then we also have um. Market Square and then we also have Amy's Snapchat. So with all that, you know, she's a small business owner too and we welcome that into our community. Uh we also have a donut shop, but other than that, it's all farming and um. We welcome small businesses. I would like small businesses to come in and take a chance and to know that there's help. And if I can help in any way within small business, whether it be uh grants, uh trying to apply for grants. Or like you said, you're gonna go for grant writing and I'm pretty sure there's a lot of people that are watching that do have businesses, they don't know where to go. That um are uh seeking something. So I believe that uh.
There's private grants out there that people don't know about. There's private grants. You don't have to have a five O C one three or a business like SBA does. There's private grants out there that people don't know about. It's called individual grants. And I'll be teaching that as well, just to give you guys heads up cuz I'm gonna teach a lot of aspects about grant writing. I'm gonna go to a lot of categories. I'm working on the website as I spoke to you prior and you know, and sponsorship is welcome because. It's a two hour class. I mean, I told Sylvia the four hours, I could do it to four hours if I want to, but I'm gonna cut it.
Nobody has that time.
Yeah, I am. Two hours max. After that, you can just ask me, no more questions, you know.
No, yeah, so I'd like to leave on that note with small business, you know, cuz. I believe we're hurting for that and I I believe if the good ideas come, I mean, I'm thinking, you know, small business like uh. It could be like a fitness, you know, somebody has has a goal of uh opening a fitness place. That would go well here, you know. Uh a small coffee shop, uh I don't know, a little thrift store, something that uh they're passionate about. Uh I know there's business owners out there and I'm all for small business. We need more small business in our town. And um I'm looking forward to you, Daniel, to come.
You hit the word. You see, you hit the word, passion. They don't have a passion for what they're gonna do. They need a passion to write that grant and write. To succeed succeed in their business. Cuz I mean, I could go into, yeah.
I believe that uh uh we're gonna have some responses coming in and people were gonna are gonna be calling me and. I'm gonna direct it to you and hopefully you can have a big presentation on uh the loans and grants and stuff like that. And what we can do, the the grant writing, it's important.
Hey, the details are 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 in process. The organizers out there in your town are helping me, so I'm I'm glad. Your organizer, I know it's a Sunday, so I call it Sunday Family Day, but uh I had to get this interview out because election's thirty days away.
But I think we had something today where um they were all, they all met at the courthouse, which is nice, you know, I I seen a post earlier. And they're out there, you know, they're grinding also. They're 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 representing for their city, but I don't know if you seen that earlier. Yeah, that's awesome too, you know, the the leaders, those are our leaders, our community. And um but anyways, thank you for your time, Daniel. And once again, George Prieto, Calipat City Council, I'll be waiting. We had a little um icy little giveaway the other day and just little things, you know, nothing big. And we'll probably do something along the lines. But uh muchas gracias once again. Thank you. Thank you for your time, man. I appreciate it. I appreciate you.
Be in contact over that. Um like I said, I'm working in detail with your one of your leaders. And we're gonna get up there, I wanna be up there and I'm excited for it cuz it took. A person to person to make it happen. I'm gonna make it happen. I I I ain't gonna, you know, it's after election, but yeah, I'm excited and talk to you soon, George.
Thank you so much. Now get it relaxed, brother. Now get it relaxed.